We have a second. Who's second in favor of all in favor of the I?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. There's a notification to open meetings act posted on the back door of the room. If you will call Melissa.
Here.
Justin. Self, Wyatt's excused.
Here.
Chance. I've heard he's not going to. We'll start then at the hold of office number six. The minister, I think, or Dr.
Okay, well, Mr. Alexander and Mr. Dore, you have in front of you our, our policy on hold of office. And so if you would just please stand and together you can go ahead and, and just recite that. And then it's official. And so then you, then you can actually make a motion and a second. On the I can suddenly get there.
I, Justin Dore, do so swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of the Plameview School District Board of Education according to the law and to the best of my ability. And I do first swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. And that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of government of the United States or of this state by force or violence. So help God.
Thank you, guys. Officially sworn in. Uh, we'll go into number seven, reorganization of the board, question of the president.
According to policy two oh three, after a reelection in November at the January meeting, we elect officers to the Board of Education. So accepting nominations for president.
Tim.
Nomination for Tim Rasmussen.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Tim Rasmussen for president of the board for the twenty twenty-five calendar year? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say you sign. Mr. President, the gavel is yours.
Uh, then we'll need to fill our vice president position. Any nominations for vice president? I will nominate Wyatt. Talked to him. He's okay with it. He's not here tonight. Second?
Second.
Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of Wyatt from the vice president, if I may say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? She carried Wyatt, vice president. Um, then we also need to elect a secretary.
I nominate Justin.
I'll second. You accept first. Any other nominations? Okay, if not, all those in favor of Justin Dore as secretary, if I may say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Motion carried.
Yeah, oftentimes too, some school districts will identify recording secretary, which essentially Kelly, but by default essential. If she is the board's recording secretary, but Mr. Dore will have some responsibilities as the identified board member. Uh, and some signatures required throughout the year, but no very, no quite taxing duties, uh, like Kelly as for the most part is recording secretary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we will then move on to number nine, approve the agenda. We do want to just take, we're at a table number nineteen tonight. So we'll move that probably the next one. We down a few more meetings about that. Before we move forward on that.
And we got, we did give an updated bit on that today as well, so we just, we don't want to rush it and we don't need to rush it. So, um, we'll probably meet with technology committee prior to February meeting. Uh, and then we should be ready to go ahead and ask the board to take action on right now to compete against for that.
So that would be the only change to the agenda. We had a motion to approve the agenda we got changed.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
Okay, second?
Second.
Move the second to approve the agenda, change taken to table number nineteen, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. We'll go to number ten, the consent agenda. Okay, so we just look at the minutes, we look at the financials, uh, all the claims, uh, and we accept that all in. We'll start off with the minutes from last month's meeting. Also that special meeting, sixteen contract. All that looks okay, we'll move on to the financials on the next page.
Uh, with regard to your CDs, we did reinvest a hundred thousand, uh, a couple of months ago. Still checking on, um, the rates. Um, so you can see those rates on, on your first page of the general fund. The, you know, the Mexican bank is one of the places where we wanted to potentially reinvest, but their rate is the lowest right now. And so, um, I, I do want to do that in the coming next couple of months. So might ask you in February if the rates don't change, you know, that, uh, we go ahead and, and reinvest up to probably a hundred thousand dollars at this time, maybe do more, but I feel more comfortable it's just a hundred thousand with wherever we're going to get the best rate as opposed to where we withdrew those funds from, those CDs from. So, um, I'll have some, a clarification for you, maybe ask you to consider that next month.
Does all have similar maturity?
Yes, yes, they're different, different dates throughout the year, but, um, but they're all twelve month. Six month. Uh, well.
No, they aren't.
I think, yeah, I think they're all twelve, but. So, you know, you kind of debate on whether you have a little higher rate, a little different, you know, level of maturity. So pretty much we just, we just, we sit in there and let it ride, right? But, uh, we did access some of that a few years ago and we just want to build that back up to, you know.
You guys will notice they've got all the activity funds in here, the nutrition fund, all that's included in there too. Okay, roll. Other questions on the financials? Okay. We'll go on to the claims. And then we write up, if there's something special, you can see it on the right side there. Little description of what it was for.
Basically, anything over four hundred, I try to give you a description of what there is. I can raise it if you want me to or whatever works best for you guys.
No, it's nice to have that description in there.
You see a lot of reoccurring, uh, expenses in, in the claims. Um, and oftentimes just about similar amounts, utilities, you know, will, you know, will, will pretty much be similar year over year. Uh, your ESU services is always going to be your most significant generally, uh, every month. Receive a lot of services from them that primarily SPAD is responsible, our special ed resources are, are responsible for the biggest piece of the pie for ESU services. And then there'll be some, uh, obviously from time to time, your, your band uniforms are in here, so your claims are a little higher this month. We had two months in a row of under a hundred thousand, which is unusual. This was significantly well over, but a couple of big expenses approved by the board that are just, are, are coming due. Uh, next month, I do intend to have the same two gals that modeled for you, uh, last year. Uh, they're going to come and show you, now they, they did, I'm getting into a bit of a report here, don't attempt to, but uh, we said we'd bring them to you when they're in and we could have done that tonight, but we got a few other things going on, so that might be next month.
That number is usually around the hundred thousand.
Oh, um, we would love to have it be a hundred thousand a month, claims. It goes under a few times, but you'll find that nine months out of twelve, it's a hundred to a hundred and quarter. We are over two hundred a couple of months. And there's some bigger things that come to a premium, when our bush and room premium comes due, that's a significant annual expense of geez, what does that kill? I mean, tens of thousands, eighty?
It was about a hundred and eighteen bucks.
Yeah, I mean, over a hundred thousand just for our, uh, umbrella coverage. So, yeah, you'll, you'll see some patterns, um, but we take a hundred thousand a month. But it's average more than that.
You see that, the server is on there to approve his last class.
And the audit's on there too.
And the audit. Any other questions? Not, then we'll just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to second consent agenda.
Yes? I'll second it. Second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Move on then to number eleven, we got a celebration license, teachers demonstrated your AI tool.
Are we projecting?
Yes. What band are we still working with?
Yeah, just like type of little code.
Where can you do that?
I don't know. I can do it up here. Oh, yeah, you do this little guy.
Nice delivery.
Same. High school. And then it'll ask you for a code. Thank you.
All right, here we go. So we didn't know if you guys were familiar at all with, um, this teaching tool that is called Brisk. Um, so I'm going to do a quick run through of what it is a little bit, and then I'm going to give some examples of how I utilize it in my classroom. And then to a gentleman as well. Um, so what is Brisk? So it's an innovative AI powered, uh, platform designed specifically for educators. It's here to streamline workflow, spark creativity, and get teachers more time to focus on what truly matters inspiring students. Um, here's just a few examples of things that it can do. So it can generate creative lesson plan ideas, suggest engaging activities, and even help you differentiate construction for that, for diverse learners. Um, as far as like grading and feedback, it can assist in grading assignments and provide constructive feedback to students. It can generate customized worksheets and exercises tailored to individual student needs and seconds. And then some administrative tasks like drafting emails to create records. Uh, so it's here to enhance teacher skills, not replace invaluable expertise and personal touch. So here would be an example, if I pulled up a website and I was teaching plate tectonics and volcanic activity. So that, that little icon down there would pop up and I, I click it, that's a whole box of things that I can pick. I mean, anything that I want to do really. So progress report, um, if I want to do a quiz, I can change, I can have it change the reading level. Uh, so now I'm going to go into a little bit of how I have used it in my room. So I, um, just put on here, these are just, this is just a list of the state standards that my fifth graders have to learn by the end of the year. Um, and I know our curriculum touches on these things, but I don't feel like, um, it goes into the depth that it really needs to to show our kids are showing growth in our math testing. So what I've done is I took those state standards and I plugged them into Brisk and I had Brisk create me, um, slideshows for each one of those concepts. So here's just an example of some of them that I've done already. Um, the awesome thing is you can do as many slides as you want. I've done all these in twenties and you can add less or more. Um, I'm going to show you an example really quickly. This is just one that I made. This is on elements of story. So it was talking about studying characters in conflict. The awesome thing about Brisk is it did this literally in probably thirty seconds, I would say. It put in all the information for me. It inserts the pictures, um, it does the background. If I were to do this by myself, it could take anywhere between thirty minutes to an hour just to create one slideshow, honestly. By the time you put in all the information and inserting the pictures. So here's another thing, kind of the same thing. I just took the state standards, but I put it in and had it create a quiz for me. So my kids right now, we have to learn, um, the Greek derived words. So this was one that it created for me. Um, here's another one, right now we're talking about pronouns and antecedents, so I did the same thing for our grammar concepts right now. Um, this is also an awesome tool that has, so I had kids, they had to write, um, poems about winter. So this is one of my students' work right here and I asked, uh, Brisk to give feedback on her work. So it gives them a list of the blows, so all the things that she did really well and then grows, all the things that it, it, um, is seeing that she might be helped on. So try, try to add more rhyming words to your poem. Um, and then the last part is wondering, these are just questions that it's asking her, um, just so she can reflect as a writer. Um, I did put in our twenty spelling words per week and had it create extra spelling worksheets because honestly, our curriculum gives us about two or three spelling sheets a week and that's it. So it's nice to have extra. Um, same thing with our vocabulary. Um, this was a tool, I have not used this yet, but I'm, I would love to. So there's nothing really out there that helps, um, kids practice map testing. And that's what we focus on a lot is we want our map testing scores to go up. So neither does Brisk, but I did take an SAT reading and writing practice test. And the format of this test, or this practice test is very similar to the questions that they would see on a map test. So I think honestly, this would be beneficial to practice this quite often. Um, here's another example. So every week we have a different story in our small group reading. So here's one of our leveled readers. And I typed in the author, the name of the book, and it was able to come up with questions based off of this. And then kind of the last thing that I've done, and I, um, I forgot to bring along, Mr. Chambers, I asked him today how he has utilized this Brisk tool. And he kind of said the same thing, uh, but he uses his more for like skeletal notes. Um, and then they talk about it as a class. I just picked this article because I wanted the kids to, uh, start reading about the Los Angeles wildfires. So this article pops up, it's at the ninth grade level, so I'm teaching fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. So I can take this article and I can convert it into whichever grade level I want. So in this instance, I converted it to the fifth grade level, um, and then I created a quiz. So after we're done reading, that the kids can take a quiz on it. So those are kind of the ways that I have utilized, uh, Brisk so far. Um, I will say it does about eighty percent of the work for you, the other twenty is on you. Um, just going through the material, making sure that it, I mean, there's obviously going to be typos and stuff like that, so. But it is, um, I will say, for us as teachers, anything that can help save time is, is kind of worth it for us, so. Um, are there any questions for me?
Do you like, do you find yourself agreeing with the feedback and the results that it gives you?
Yeah, the only thing, the only one that I will say I've had many issues with, like all the quizzes, all that kind of stuff has been wonderful. This one, I did have to tweak a little bit myself. It did not, like it was asking a question about something that was not pertaining to the book. Um, but that's the only one that I've really found that, um, was not probably a hundred percent after it, but other than that, everything else.
Still got to go through.
Yeah, you still have to, yeah, 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 yeah. Actually, like I said though, about probably eighty percent of the work is done by the program, which is awesome.
So is still the loose names, there's some AI, AI, they call it AI hallucinations where, but let them, what you said there, just made something up.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess that's that twenty percent we're talking about where you.
Yeah, I just go, yeah, yeah, I just go through, perครีด everything, make sure there's nothing wrong with it. Yep.
Now at a high school level, can any of the high school teachers tell me, does the, when you're putting this in for your chapter, for your book or whatever class you're doing, does it ever accidentally pull from other chapters or does it stay specific to like chapter nine and ten?
You can be, you can be that specific if you want to. Um, you can type in anything you want. So I could say, um, just ask twenty multiple choice questions on chapter one in Papas Bill by blah blah blah, and it, it would pull that up. Yep, you can be specific as you want. Yeah.
How long have you been using this?
We had it for about, I'd say, a month.
Beginning of December?
Yep, about a month.
Yeah.
And I don't even know if we had access to everything that it offers. Um, I was watching a couple of videos even on it, and I think there were some other tools that it offered, but since we had just kind of the tutorial, um, we didn't have access to all the tools, so, um, these are just kind of some of the ones that I felt were probably the most beneficial from my grade.
Really good questions. Um, I guess I can pick up from there. That was phenomenal.
We're just talking, we should let you go last.
Um, but I think from a high school standpoint, Junior and I, Sean Torrey, I teach, uh, sub to eighth grade, social studies, and then ninth grade geography as well. Thank you. And I'm going to show you a little bit about how I use it, um, at the secondary level. And so this is an inside look here of my Google Classroom. And, uh, this was an assignment I gave on December seventeenth, and so you see my learning objectives. If I can make this screen better. Um, we were studying the Aztecs, uh, as part of ancient Latin America, and we came to the city of Tenochtitlan, which is now modern day Mexico, uh, for those of you who are geography teachers in the room. Um, and I found this really cool website on Tenochtitlan. In fact, some architects have actually recreated the city based off of what modern day Mexico city is versus what we think Tenochtitlan looked like. Um, and so you can kind of see, these are all AI generated projections. So this website is high engagement, and I think in the education world, it's really hard to be high engagement and high assessment. And AI gives you the opportunity to do both. And so I found this really cool website. That's what Tenochtitlan would have looked like today. But there's another aerial shot, and these architects put this together from drone footage and then based off of the archaeology of the region. It was actually built in the middle of a lake, so like it was a floating city. So a lot of cool things there. And this is the part that I really liked for, um, for our high school kids was it does a side by side of what Tenochtitlan would have looked like on the left and then what modern day Mexico city looks like. And so I click and drag. There's the same area versus what it looks like today. So high engagement, kids were like, whoa, that's awesome. Look at the center square. I mean, you can see the heart of the city, um, and things like that. So it just helps bring history alive a little bit. And then here's another aerial, again, Tenochtitlan on the left and Mexico City on the right. And so that's what the ancient empire would have looked like versus what ma- modern day Mexico city looks like. And then again, so I really like this website. And so in order to use it, and again, most years when I was teaching, I would just do Tenochtitlan, I would just show this website. We would talk about it, maybe have a couple of discussion questions, and that was kind of it, pretty low assessment. Um, instead, I can go Brisk, I just add the button down here that I pinned, and I can go create. And if the two main tools that I use, the, uh, risk for our presentation and for quiz. So in this case, I'll just show you what it looks like to create a quiz. So exactly like what Ms. Alexander just said, is I can pick the grade level on here, I can put how many questions, um, and I can have it generate multiple choice. And so I'll just let it ride here with ninth grade, multiple choice, twenty questions. It puts it into Google form, which makes it super easy to add to Google Classroom. And you'll watch it generate its quiz right now.
Now can you cherry pick any of these questions, say like, I don't like this one, I'm going to take it out, or I want to change it, add to it, anything like that?
Yes, you, so it's a Google form and it's in your Google Drive, so you have total customizability. So I can go to settings, if I don't want kids to see the correct answers, I can take that away. You know, if I only wanted to take it one time, I can make that, I can lock that. If I want to change a question, I can come in here and I can mark different things, I can change all the options. So it's all done in my Google Drive, which is really nice, um, because that's how all the Google family tools work together. Um, and it's super easy to save and create as well. Now here's the part that I thought was interesting. I'm going to show you two versions of the quiz that I actually gave the class. The first one, we talked about like hallucinogens, right? Like, uh, the AI hallucinogens or however you say that. Um, this is what it generated the first time I ran it out of twenty questions. And if you zoom in on the questions, you'll see it says, you know, what was the primary focus of Thomas Wissender's work here that inspired this project? And they're talking about the architect, they're talking about the abstract that went with the website. Well, I don't teach web design, I don't want them to know about who put it together and why they created it. I want it to be on the history of Tenochtitlan and how that impacted the Aztecs. So I had it regenerate the quiz and I added the specification, uh, of making it about the history of the Aztecs. And the second time I ran the quiz, uh, this is more what I got. So the first question is, what was the approximate population of Tenochtitlan in fifteen eighteen? Boom. So like, that's what I want, right? Because in the website, that's directly off one of the paragraphs in the website, we talked about it in my presentation. Um, and so this made it easy for me to take a high engagement technology tool like that interactive website and then have some kind of assessment. So we probably spent thirty to forty minutes exploring the, uh, the website and then the last five to eight minutes to take the quiz. And then everyone got twenty out of twenty or ten out of ten, I can't remember what this one was. It looks like this is twenty points, so, you know, almost everyone gets twenty out of twenty on the quiz. And then I've got some proof that says that I actually taught that lesson that day, uh, even though the quiz is the low stakes, you know, assessment. Real, the, the cool thing was looking at Tenochtitlan and how it compared to modern day Mexico city. So that's an easy way to kind of have engagement and assessment.
With that, that also, well, right there, that saved it for him, he can use it for now for years to come or a different class. That will never change. Unless it wants to change it, you know, he's asking you to, hey, can you reorder these? Change your answers or maybe, hey, any more critical thinking in-depth questions here, that will do it as well. Um, with this, I believe, now since I teach, uh, upper level science, I believe it's a good tool because as we know, today, technology is always changing. And you got to learn to adapt with it, and if you can adapt with it, that's just another tool for the toolbox here. We're like the Swiss Army knife, we can, uh, we can become better with it. All right, so like I said, I teach science, so environmental science is the hottest topic right now, no pun intended there. Um, that was not planned. So, and but we're talking about water, uh, forest, soil, you name it, all this. Oh, I like to incorporate real life lessons with my lessons here, which I don't think we get enough of that today. And no one likes to read out a science textbook because it can be difficult. Well, see now here, I can use my AI tool to do what you've just heard. I can make it into a presentation, which I will do, I can make it into a quiz, and better yet, I just did this. If I were to quiz these, and sorry, the font's small, but I can always change that. They just made a review for my students here. And then I can go back and pick and choose, well, maybe I didn't want fiery college in there. Well, I can pick and choose and I can get rid of that, or I can say, hey, could you add more information to that? Now as long as I supply them with all my stuff, it will do it. I'm in control of it, it just does what I say. But when I use this, uh, Coach Torrey, Mr. Torrey, we're saying, like, he would do those quizzes. Now the best thing about this, and you know, kids do it in today's world, they like to cheat, they like to go home and cheat or find ways to take the easy road home. Um, I like to use this because it keeps my kids accountable. I like to use this cause it keeps my kids accountable, and it helps me crack down on cheating. Because I can go back and I'll hear, I'll create a quiz real quick for you on this. We'll go, and I can pick any grade level, so I teach environmental science to my seniors. I have multiple choice, we didn't, we don't need a big quiz now. And I can create it here, and as you see, you've seen this previously, but it will create it for me. Now, I would go through and double check everything here with this quiz. But I don't like cheating at all, cause then what was the point of it? Or why are you even taking the time to learn? I can go to my settings, and right here, the slot mode, and slot mode's really nice. Kids don't like it for doing it. But they actually are held accountable. They have to read this and then comprehend what they just read from said article, and then take the quiz over it. And if kids try to exit out of the quiz, or go back and try to look, or look up on a different tab even, I get an email or a notification saying, and they have their emails attached to it, and it's all hooked through our Google Classroom, that so-and-so went to this. And it's already grading it, and not, say he gets, let's say, four out of five now, even if they get a hundred. So it's holding them accountable cause they're sets cheating. Now, I can always change how much the grading scale can affect it. But I think it's a great tool, not only to teach our kids with, but also hold them accountable so they're not cheating and going behind our backs when we can't control that. So like, if I gave this homework today, and then they do it tonight, how do I know if they would cheat? Or, you know, well, right here, they take their school computer home. I get three emails tonight at nine o'clock saying they went to a different tab. I know they were cheating. So this is a great tool, I think, not only for us to use within the classroom, but to also hold each other and our students accountable. So that's what I like to use it for as well. And I think it's good to teach real life lessons as well. Anything else we'd like to add? That's all I have, so.
Is there much difference when you go between like ninth and tenth grade? Can you choose ninth or tenth grade?
Yes. From my experience, I've done it, I teach sophomores up to seniors. From what I've seen, and I've sometimes done it too, cause I have a variety of classes on junior seniors. I can give them senior level stuff, they know when it's harder. Like, and I can see it too, I look at it, obviously, and evaluate it, but I can see where that could affect you. Now, if I have a kid also that has, uh, like an IP or something like that, I can change all those settings to make it easier for that one person so they're able still to do it and be a part of everything. Nothing's changed, no one would know, it still fits their plan, and it follows along with all of our rules, so.
Cause you could do the inverse too, could you?
Yeah, yep.
How many, uh, programs are like this that are out there, or why did you decide to try this one? And if anybody wants to answer that, there's gotta be a bunch of them, I would think.
AI is everywhere. It's on your phone.
I picked this one just because it, um, ties directly into Google, or Google School. And so it interfaces directly into Google Docs, Google Sheets, um, and webpages. So it's there live all the time. Most of the other, uh, AI tools, you have to take the URL and put it into the, into the site and then utilize it. Uh, this allows you to do it directly in it. And the other piece, uh, that Brisk does, is it uploads, it already has embedded in the system all of the, uh, Nebraska state standards for ELA math and science and social studies built into it. So teachers can tailor it directly to the standards that they're teaching.
So we're in a trial period right now?
Yep. We may ask you to invest in, um, for our whole staff, long term, right? So we wanted you to see, um, what you've been getting for, uh, the investment that we'll probably be asking you to make.
How long is the trial?
It's shutting down pretty quick, right?
The free trial shuts down tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
What time tomorrow?
I, I gotta talk to Paige tomorrow.
You gotta do some magic so you don't lose everything that you need.
I was just gonna ask for feedback from the staff here, but I got it.
Has everybody, has everybody been allowed to use it, or just?
Yes, everybody has had access to it for thirty days.
Yep. Is there certain subjects it's more applicable to than, than others, or?
Geez, I think, I think every teacher, every content area and every grade level can find something to help make their job streamlined, some of their, uh, routine tasks.
If I can, if I can chime in, coming from music, um, so we have to do common lit. There's nothing in our common lit really for music. There's like one or two articles. When I use this, I can go in and search for actual academic music articles, and then it'll help me make it like readable for like my junior high. And then I can make it, I have, um, two kids who are way below their regular reading level. I can then take it, and there's a seventh grader who's at like a first grade reading level. I could take it, give it to them at their reading level, and it still pertains to me as a music teacher to make me feel like I'm continuing to make them learn stuff in music while they're getting their reading enhancement done. So like, it's been helping for me especially because for a while, for common lit, I was just giving him common lits that had nothing to do for my subject, which kind of was not my favorite thing. So it really helped, I'll be sad, then, from the trials.
To give you a background of what common lit is, our goal obviously is reading comprehension. That's our school goal, um, over five years. So in the seven twelve building, every teacher has to give two reading assignments with comprehension per quarter, um, for every single class that they teach. So in theory, every kid that comes through our building will have sixty-four reading comprehension assessments throughout the school year, to try and boost that reading comprehension, try and increase that. And so what we've used is common lit, um, but it doesn't have articles that pertain to everything. So then this last semester, in December, a few teachers were able to try this and find articles that pertain to their class periods and create quizzes and do the comprehension piece that way.
What does a yearly subscription to this cost?
Uh, I think for a school district our size, full price was thirty-eight hundred, I believe.
Just one more thing too, um, just like not the teaching side of it, but as far as like, okay, so I know like special ed, they have to write progress reports, uh, for kids that are on IPs. And just even for myself, when we have to write, um, uh, report card comments, like it can even assist on things like that. Like you type in the kid's strengths, weaknesses, and it helps to generate things. It just make, it, it's just such a time saver, because I'm, I'm just speaking for myself. I teach fourth, fifth, and sixth grade reading. Uh, when you have to write seventy-five comments for multiple classes, it is extremely, I, I mean, it just takes a lot, a lot of time. So this is just a, a tool that helps on the non-teaching side of it, but, um, just is super helpful, I guess.
Um, I was also going to add in, with my dual credit class that I teach for, with here at Wayne State for the EDU two seventy-five class, one of the very first lessons that, um, I taught was, um, to use AI tool, which was, they had us use Brisk, was to use, um, the student had to analyze an AI tool, such as Brisk, to generate a lesson plan, and then to analyze that lesson plan with, um, their practicum teacher. That's one of their very first lessons they wanna have them do. So they're already using that in their education and teaching classes there at Wayne State, so.
Awesome.
Does this replace the tools we currently have, or is this addition to, this is a whole new tool?
And so it's, you know, kids, kids got their AI, right? I mean, so this is check GTS, obviously, designed for teachers, so. All school districts are finding a way to help their teachers do what their students are about, six months to a year, to two years or more ahead of us, you know, with regard to AI, so. It doesn't replace anything precise that we do now, but there will be things that our staff probably will not do or use anymore. We'll find that out probably maybe after the fact.
And as far as like metrics to evaluate, like, you know, you know, once, say we do a year of this, and we wanna evaluate, was this a useful tool? Did it help? Are we looking at like math scores, or I guess we're, or is it just?
Oh, yeah, some of it'd be hard to measure, just like teaching, you know, time saver efficiency and so on. But yeah, I think it's fair to say, we, we hope that this is gonna, uh, help, you know, boost academic achievement, primary goal of school. You know, everything should be designed to, to one degree or another, to support that mission. So will we be able to have direct empirical evidence that Brisk helped raise our math scores in math testing? Probably not.
I think you can.
I think so.
But now, if we are, if we decide to move forward on this and we have our teachers using this, what is our stance gonna be on allowing the kids to use AI? And how do we police that?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good question, and I think we'll probably invite some of our staff back. They're the best advocates for, you know, what's happened where the rubber's being the road. On, here's what we're seeing with regard to student use of AI. Uh, and here's how we're trying to, to manage it, not block it, but, uh, to, to give you some, some real experience from the folks that are, are with kids every day. Cause I think they're having conversations with kids about it. It's not the elephant in the room. I think we, you know, and we told them to, we said, just flat out ask kids, you know, a year ago, when, you know, with, with regard to check GTS, you know, okay, kids, you know, I mean, who is, who's using that? And they're pretty honest, right? But as soon as we start to say, you know, with parents, or as soon as we start to say no, well, we're doomed. You know, with regard to trying to control that with them, so. So I think, well, yeah, we'll be happy to invite some back to share some of those details, but.
One of the tools though is, uh, um, it takes documents and it actually goes through it and shows you if it's AI-generated. Uh, so it actually plays back the whole document, how it was created, and shows you how much time a kid has spent on it, based on keystrokes. Um, so I pulled up a document that I wrote my first year here, seventh grade orientation, and it recreated it right in front of me, how fast I did it, and how long it took me, and what I copied and pasted in it. So if you copy and paste the whole paragraph, it shows you that, and it shows you how many times. So if a kid writes you a paper and copy and paste the whole thing, it shows it to you and where it came from.
What format was that document in?
It was just a Google Doc that I had.
You had a Google Doc?
Yep.
To go back to your, uh, point about how are we gonna quantify this? Uh, as teachers, like, we all have spreadsheets that we have to document how many common less, lit lessons we're doing. The expectation is two a quarter. So that's documented in a shared folder with our admin and with the state of Nebraska. And so that would be a really easy way to quantify it. How many times do you use Brisk to teach a lesson, or to help enhance a lesson over the course of, of school year or a semester? That'd be another way to see, are we getting enough bang for our buck?
It's really interesting, a lot different than when I was in high school.
Same.
But it's, it's here to stay, and you gotta find a way to, to use it, you know, invest, advantage the students in this.
So the trials, uh, are we looking to continue using it this year yet, or?
We, we might ask you to approve it next month, and then it'd be an annual subscription. Probably work some magic and, and find a way for them to, I think we, we're giving some kind of reassurance. Hey, we think this is probably gonna happen, can you extend this thirty day trial for another thirty days? Cause we got people immersed in it. Yeah.
Use Brisk to write that email.
This is being recorded, so I can capture it all.
Well, thank, thank you all for sharing, yeah, thank you, experience with it, it's a lot, so, so good feedback, so.
And thank you for everything that you guys do. And if we can make your jobs easier, we sure will.
Well, we'll move on to number twelve then. Uh, do you have anybody who wants to talk tonight? Other comment? You do, you got one? Okay, I have to read my public comment statement here. Alright, we're now at the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president must stand and state your name. You'll have up to five minutes to speak and only one opportunity to do so. Please remember this meeting of the Plenary Public School Board of Education, held in public, and comments or conduct their lieu of scene, profane, slanderous, threatening or hostile will not be tolerated. Further advice, there's legal protection for any comments made. Public comment is an opportunity for patrons to express their concern or support for school business. Public comment is not an opportunity for open dialogue with the board, but an open session. Board members will listen to take comments that are advisement, but will not respond directly to questions or comments. Patrons are encouraged to follow board policy if they have a concern about personnel or school operations. Well, from the stands, state your name. Do you wanna go ahead?
Danny Dorf. First, I wanna start off with, this is not a negative comment about this AI tool, it's just an opinion. I would like to make a statement about it. AI holds potential, a lot of potential success in this education system, if it is used correctly. Though AI may feel more efficient for students and teachers to use, it is imperative to acknowledge that it is not without its flaws. It makes mistakes too. AI is a fairly new idea and should not be advised to be utilized for procrastination purposes. It is also not advised to depend solely on AI to construct a learning curriculum. But I believe it is going to be a good tool to use, as long as it is not solely dependent to, solely used to depend on a teaching curriculum.
Thanks for sharing that. Anybody else? Not, moving on to our action item or our discussion items. Number thirteen, we got a facility report. Bob Sookup.
Alright, good evening. Got a big crowd here today, so I'll just reintroduce myself. Bob Sookup with Carlson Westland Architects. Last time I spoke to the board, and we've obviously got some new members, um, it was via the video chat. So I'm thrilled to be here in person, or interact with you more readily. So far, I'm gonna give you an update on the progress and what I've been doing, but I'm not gonna do as in-depth of a report probably as you just heard, because we're still in progress, and as you can see, we're already getting fairly thick. So that's a process that will be best be done, kind of working in conjunction with your superintendent and your staffs. But in general, the board has hired my company to produce essentially a facility audit. So what does that mean? As architects, engineers, we've even got, uh, some help from our friends at Boyd Jones, Mark Fisker and his team, uh, to document the facility. That's always our first step. What do you have, right? What are the district facilities? What are the places? And Darren will kind of scroll through this as we go. You can see the table of contents. We look at background, we do the analysis, we do some history. So we'll break it up into chapters. We're basically building a book. We spent a good amount of time with Gail, kind of digging through the archives, picking up all of the old construction drawings, uh, documents that you have here at the school, took those back with us, scanned them all. It was also a big help. We utilize that to see, well, how has the district progressed? Have you gone year over year, different generations, different decades? How have you built out the facilities? Uh, but we also had help from a kind of laser scanning tool to scan, talking about new technologies. Took a gentleman, looked like a stormtrooper walking around your facility, but scanned the facility so that we have an accurate plan now, which will be in the document as well. You'll see we'll have room labels, uh, each facility, elementary, high school. You can see we've done a little bit of history work. Brisk did not help me prepare this report, and we had to do it on our own. Some of it we can't find online, things that you submit as a school district, the demographics, um, you know, historical data. A lot of what I'm seeing here at your table, your annual report that you have, tax levies, your student populations. This is meant to be kind of a good snapshot of your district in the years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so that, you know, ten years from now, if somebody would go look back at this, they could say, this was Plenary Public Schools at that time. So it's a document meant to kind of capture your history. Some of these red circles are just things that we're still editing. Uh, some of the pictures might be right, but your tax levy information hasn't been edited yet. Getting into the existing facilities, this is where you're gonna start seeing, hey, we're taking the town, we're showing where your facilities are located, high school, elementary, track and field, your welding lab, your bus barns, anything that the school district owns, we wanna capture. As part of that capturing, as I mentioned, we look at the construction documents. We're documenting years when things were built. So obviously on this plan, you can see nineteen sixty-four with your elementary. You had an addition in nineteen ninety-two. Yeah, it's a snapshot, it's kind of a historical document for you. We take a lot of photos, we'll put some of those photos in here as well. As part of this process, feel free to keep scrolling a little faster. We'll get into things that we see that are deficiencies. For example, cracks in sidewalks, handrails that don't meet ADA accessibility. We've identified those types of things in your facility. I'd like to say that every school district is perfectly upkept and meets every code, but I think you all know that's never the case. Codes change as time goes on, facilities, um, most school districts do a really good job, I would say, of keeping up with their facilities. But at times, you know, you've got a, a really old building here that's made it, uh, almost a hundred years, and sometimes they just, they can't keep up with the current codes, and you start seeing some issues. You've had a structural engineer look at some floor movements for you. It's not a hazard, and I wouldn't note it as a hazard, but it's something to consider when you look at, uh, age of the facility and things that you might plan as part of a master planning process. Here, we're getting into some of the high school pictures now. Again, accurate floor plans, labeling of, of all your rooms, so as the school exists today. And then because it's a small format, I wanna give it to you in a book. And then, because it's a small format, I want to give it to you in a book, it's hard to put all those tiny little labels, so we give you a legend. As well as the multiple floors, as you can see here, we have to note that you have a three-story facility. Obviously, when you talk building codes, there's a lot of issues that come into play with that, from fire and life safety issues to accessibility issues, even just the condition of your restroom facilities that are up there. So all of that is going into this book. Okay? The next step, too, once we've done the documentation of all of your facilities, we want to talk to the users. So we spent two days. One of the days was a football day. I know some staff were eager to go watch your boys play in the playoffs, but I had a lot of staff that day that were able to visit, and because I knew that everybody wanted a chance to speak and be heard, we came back the second day and I was stationed here at the high school. Those staff who were not able to meet with me personally and talk through their, either their role, if they're a music teacher, a science teacher, whatever, they did have an opportunity to send information through the principals, through the superintendents, to give me their feedback. So I have copies of all of those documents as well. I put that information in the book, so you will have all of those notes of the comments that I received as kind of a historical part of this document as well. So ultimately, once we get through all this information, all the historical documentation, all of the code issues, the ultimate goal in the end is we're going to work through a process with the administrators, with the staff, with you as the school board especially, to just talk about, what do we do with this next? How do we take some of these comments and look at essentially a proposed master plan? Not quite ready to show you a bunch of ideas here yet, because I've got a lot more work to do to bet how plausible some of these are. We have engineers coming a week from today, mechanical and electrical engineers. I like to get through the doors first, get the documentation done, so that they can come in and be pretty efficient and quick. They're going to come look at your electrical services, they're going to speak with Gail, speak with your facilities guys. One thing I always want to know is just, hey, if I want to build something new, what do I have for capacity? Are we talking new systems? Can the electrical service handle it? How old is your switchgear? Can you still find parts? So all of those things will go into this report as well. Once we have that documentation, you know, I'm happy to come back multiple times in the future, and I expect that I will, as we continue to build this document and build these kind of master plan ideas. There's no agenda tied to this. There's nothing that says, when I get done with this book, you have to act on it. It's just, one, a documentation of what you have today, and, two, an idea of what a roadmap for the future could be. It's up to you as a school board to decide what you want to do with this document, what you have, what you have it. But you will be an integral role of finishing this book with me and my team. Any questions?
It's like you've done a very thorough review.
I've done, yeah, but we're still. And you guys have a copy of this? Obviously, he's got it up here. It's a draft, like I said. You can see some of those areas where it's circled in red. That just means we're still editing those elements of the of the document as well. But it's a process, you know, we're we're kind of writing a book for you. So it'll take us, you know, a few more weeks in the future to get to get through this process. If you have a timeline that you want me to speed up, you just need to let me know, but we've got a pretty good pace so far.
That's going to be a primary question that I had for you, and I know the the board has a primary responsibility to determine when that is. But when would you say we could conceivably be ready to push this out to our public? Because Bob will come into a public meeting.
Yes.
You know, that some learned what I attended in Pierce last fall.
What I'd like to say is it kind of depends. Could I be ready in a month to make a presentation? Yes. Would it be as informed as I'd like it to be? Probably not, because I'd like to have an opportunity with buildings and grounds, with superintendent, with the staff, to at least give them a reaction of, hey, I listened to you, and here's my proposed solution. So there's usually maybe one or two iterations of that process. So best case, could you do it in a month's time? You could. More likely, two months would be better, because it'd give us more time to just have a little back and forth. And that's what this very last chapter is really about, is how do you take all this information? I think you guys need time, too, to kind of see the notes that I have from the staff and understand where those comments are coming from and see, is this a valid path to take some of those comments? We'll put some budgetary items in here as far as, hey, if you wanted to push an idea of, I want to build a new bus barn, you know, that's not something that's a big focus right now, but as an example, if that was a big topic, you know, we want to build a new bus barn, I would show a concept plan, some square footage, and give you a ballpark range of a potential cost. Okay? And the goal then is, when you look through this book, you could say, well, here's a bunch of different ideas. I kind of like, you know, A, C, and F. And if I add those things together, what kind of dollars and cents is the district looking at? Because really, it's 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 almost like you could take this and make it à la carte. You could say, I like this part, and I like this part, but I don't want to touch that. And that's perfectly fine. It's not meant to be the solution, it's meant to be a multitude of solutions that you could use in the future as you are looking at ways to just either continually improve or maintain your facilities. Good question?
Yes, I wasn't thinking of, well, just hopefully sometime this spring.
I wouldn't assume so. I mean, if you told me, yeah, I want something faster, spring's fine. It's, I I will work at the pace that you want to, you want to work at, and if you said, we'd just like to be able to present this at the end of the school year in May before it disappears for the summer, we could do that. That's definitely.
What's the objective of your of your presentation? Is it just showing what you found, or is it also providing potential solutions?
Oh, and and I know, just because Darren had the chance to attend the one in Pierce, what ultimately happened with that process, we did a book just like this, we did all the same interviews, we did all the same documentation, we generated some ideas. Their school board already had the idea that just the bare minimum limits, they have doors on their elementary facility that when it snows, the snow comes in the door. Right? So they know, we have a bare minimum of things that we know we want to do, but we want to document this and then be able to go to the public and say, hey, here's a report from an outside entity that just says, as a building, you know, X, Y, and Z are starting to get old and we got to think about things, ways to address it. But beyond that, if you want to talk about things that, when you go play athletics at somewhere in Norfolk and you see a new gym, well, could we do that? Sure, you could do that, and I could show you a footprint or maybe if you go. Doesn't mean that's what they're doing. But they used it as a tool to just engage the public and say, here's, here's the report, the staff kind of prompted the architect to ask these questions and find solutions, and it's just a public presentation. Again, what happens after that is kind of up to you and the community. You know, if there's interest to say, hey, yeah, it makes a lot of sense, this this 1930s building is starting to be a problem if we have students that that are wheelchair-bound, which honestly could happen over this winter, right? Somebody could be in a car accident and be wheelchair-bound tomorrow. It's unfortunate, it happened in my school district when I was in school. So it's a means to be prepared for situations like that down the road. But that might be something that if you hear somebody in the community say, yeah, I've got to move my class because I teach this class and now I've got a student who can't reach the third floor. So we have to start swapping students, start swapping staffing locations, which can be disruptive sometimes, if you have teachers that have been in a room for a while and now they're going to change where they are. It's a reality, though. Teachers are the most resourceful creatures on this planet, I think. They do the most with the least amount input. I have no goal. The goal is, I want to give you the report that tells you accurately what facilities do you have today, what codes are deficient, and then, based on staff feedback, what are ways to do it?
This is requested by yet on board before the election, so that we can make goals for best in the town, our school, what that all was right, so there's my timeline of this, just so we can start planning for the future.
And we could get, let's say it's in June, and I give a report, and it could sit on the shelf for a year, it could sit on the shelf for five years. It's up to you after that. There's nothing contractual with me after this report.
Did you talk to students, too? I might have missed that, or I didn't know.
We didn't talk to students.
I didn't know if they were part of the presentation.
But if that was a real strong desire, we could. It would be kind of hard to talk to your entire student body. Teachers and staff are a smaller pool for me.
We'd be kind of apprehensive to do that. Oftentimes, you include students in some visionary planning. We're talking about potential facilities for generations, you know, and so, I mean, we're, we 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 trust our our staff more than anybody. They live here and will most all of them for many, many, many more years. And so we think we can capture all the information we'll need from our stakeholders and staff.
Okay? What else?
So I can see the final report. That's good.
You will see it well in advance of the public press occasion.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah.
We'll see it.
Yeah.
Have a chance to go. Yeah, looks good.
Obviously, we can see it's in March 2024, we went well past that date, but still editing. Okay, well, I thank you for your time today. Like I said, this is an ongoing process, this is just going to continue to, to get more robust for you as a useful tool. That's it. It's just that.
Thanks for coming out.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes. I was maybe going to do that later. Also, with regard to facilities, you know, I did have Bill, Bill Beckenhauer was here. He was here eight years ago to look at the 1920 building, the sagging floors. He did kind of come back and freshen his memory, look at his old reports. So I I hope that he may have something for us to look at, and I, but it's obviously fine with regard to just arresting the potential continued sagging or failure, if you want to use that, versus a bid that will put it back the way it was. I told him, I said, I think we probably be most interested in just, we want to just arrest any continual sagging. So I I expect that we'll have that next month, but it was good for him to come and take a fresh look at it. Yes, with, no matter what happens with regard to facilities, that's probably, we'll be educating kids in there for, you know, a couple more years, for sure. But but he was here last week. I'll have more intel for you in an updated bid. The one we had for eight years was 13,000 for one corner. We now have two corners of that building that are that are showing some failure. So I'll I'll have that for you. I thought during my report I had to do that, Mr. R.
That's good to know he was here to kind of look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just going to move on to the policy. You guys don't have your manuals and just.
He's got his up.
Oh, we got it up here.
I'll just pull it up.
Can we do that more often?
Yeah.
I like that. Well, I don't mind flipping, but that way it's more visible to anyone and everyone this year.
Yeah. So it is recommended by the NASB, which is your organization, that these three particular policies be reviewed every January after an election, so that, I mean, obviously, we do policy review every every month. It's rare that we have an exception, and we just kind of move through all the policies, primarily just to bring them to your attention, so that there's an awareness. I mean, we have hundreds of policies. You just need to know where to access them. You certainly don't need to, okay, have any of a memorized numbers or language, whatever. You just need to know how to access it when you when you have to, right? I'm a little more familiar with them than you are, but that's one of my primary responsibilities. So but these these three in particular, beginning with 20201, Board Member Code of Ethics, so it's just an awareness for the board annually on, well, okay, as a board member, these are the the a higher level of expectations for ethical behavior in and out of meetings, responsibility to my school district and certainly some items, relationship with your superintendent, you know, and a lot of I-will statements, obviously. And so it's, they're leading statements, for sure. But again, it's a policy that's drafted by NASB for best practice, right? They're like, okay, if you want to be, you know, a school, an engaging school board, a productive school board, an effective school board, this is what we recommend. This is language that we recommend. These are relationships that we recommend. So so those are, there's a lot, there's a little bit of legal reference here, not sure which, what language in here is that that applies to, but anyway, Board Member Code of Ethics, that's good, that's a good one for you to be a little more aware of, maybe, than any other. Okay, 20201, and then 20202, Conflict of Interest. I have a conflict of interest form for you all to to consider. It is highly recommended that, and it's not, it's been a non-issue here since I've been here. We've we've never had a board member that.
Is this a key for this?
Well, it's going to be something that I'm going to ask you to bring back to the next next month's meeting. We haven't, we haven't had you fill out a conflict of interest form in the past. Probably could or should, again, you know, conflict of interest, you making decisions that could benefit you, family members, or somebody else. So it's very, it's very rare in a small town, it's almost unavoidable unavoidable sometimes. But you might, we might just try to think in advance of decisions that you maybe asked to vote on that could conceivably, or in perception of some stakeholders, hey, you're motivated to vote on that based on some type of economic gain for you or a family member. So I would just ask you to, do you look at this conflict of interest statement? Bring it back, and we'll probably, you're supposed to think through, okay, who, where will I need to abstain from voting? You know, if there are any annual or routine items. So if if Gene Steinkrauss was on the board, there would be a potential conflict of interest that that's where we get the bulk of our fuel, right? I mean, so that, but again, in a small town, that's the way it is, right? So but that was, that's kind of a, I don't know if it's a good example or not, but something along those lines. So this policy is with regard to potential conflict of interest. Hasn't been an issue in in my nine years here that it that it's ever been brought as an issue. Ethics violations, this maybe goes along with previous policy just a little bit. So just some more language with regard to, you know, the the position that you hold within the community as an elected official, and just obviously a little higher standard for how you conduct business, personal, and school business. So don't have any recommendation for language changes? Sometimes I will during policy review. Most of the time, any policy language change is dictated by the unicameral. So something changes and we get a whole set of policies. You know, Chance and Tim and Melissa, you're fully aware that once the unicameral is done in June, we usually have a stack of of policies that we need to pass, because language has changed now, so.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage everybody to read that 20201, you know, just every every year in January, because there's a lot of good things in there that you tend to forget, you know, about. So before next meeting, you know, take a good look at that one. Just review that information. Any other questions on any of that? Okay, we'll move on to 15 action items. Discuss and take possible action on re-adoption of existing policies, regulations, and handbooks of the policy. That's a policy 20301.
So your your policy 20301 highly recommends that a new board after an election go ahead and show your support to the way we're currently operating, right? Now, it doesn't mean that if there are existing policies that you're going to want to have a conversation about, or or regulations, that conversation can't. or regulations, that conversation can and will come later. But our, we're in the middle of a budget, we're in the middle of a fiscal budget, we're, we're in the middle of a school year, obviously. We've, we've got a series of policies that are on the books. So, it's just good to, every other year, when you have a new board, which you do, when you have any one new member, you have a new board, obviously, to, to say, okay, we're united as a board, at least on this night, with regard to existing policies, regulations, handbooks, and the budget. And, you know, Kate and Justin, you notice in your packet too, the pages after the agenda. I, I always provide language for the motion. Those are, that's just recommended language if indeed, you know, and that's generally what happens. But oftentimes, obviously, board member can adjust the language of a motion. But generally, I'll give you the routine language that would be necessary.
That's really helpful in these little numbers.
I'd make a motion to readopt all the existing policies, regulations, and handbooks governing and providing direction for playing in public schools for the current school year.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded in. Any other discussion? Not, we'll go down the line and vote. Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried six oh. Number 16, discuss and take possible action approving Dr. Darren Arlitt as the district's nondiscrimination compliance coordinator as per policy 20301. More organization.
This just means that I get the email from the feds that you have to know who to contact. So, according to policy, you have to identify a district representative. Practically every school district gets a superintendent, unless it's super large districts, then it's somebody, you know, assistant superintendent in charge of this or that or the other thing. So, we just have to be on record that I am the representative of the school district for federal policies, especially with regard to nondiscrimination compliance.
Paul, make a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Darren Arlitt as state and federal programs director.
Okay, I'll second that. Moved and seconded and accept after all as approved state as the, just said it last. State and federal programs director. Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote. Myself, yes. Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Motion carried five oh. I'd say six oh.
I got it.
Okay, number 17, discuss and take possible action accepting the 2024 annual report should happen back.
Okay, yeah, you've got a nice big color copy. Should be easier to see than the one that was in your packet. So, so I, I, Kate and Justin, I always provide you with a folder with some additional materials. Sometimes that's designed so that your packet isn't quite so thick. They're all relevant, but they might not be directly related to any action item. So, certainly want you all to have a nice big copy. This should be folded in there, in your folder. This should be folded. So, this is also something that I need to do a better job of probably presenting out to the community. This would be good to be posted at Mary's and posted at Serendipity, Just Love, whatever. Just make it available to, obviously, our local media has it. I'll push it out on social media tomorrow. A lot of data, some that people care about, some that others may not so much. But it's, it, we're statutorily required to provide an annual report. It can look however you want it to. We've been doing this for several years. It was at the request of the board, asked me to put it, you know, we didn't want a bunch of narratives. We don't want a bunch of pages that nobody's gonna read of narratives, right? Just give us some fact, factual data, some trend data on the things that people care most about. And, and a lot of it's gonna be budgetary in nature. Makes all the sense in the world. Then, some performance data, enrollments, and then just some things like how many miles did we put on our vehicles last year? How many kids, how many breakfasts and lunches did we serve? Those are kind of curious things to know that may or may not be handy for you at some point in time when you're engaged with a stakeholder about something. This is just kind of a one-stop shopping for a whole lot of, a whole lot of data with regard to the district. I don't know that I have anything precise that I want to bring your attention to that maybe jumps off the page. Our teachers with master's degree has gone up every year. That's a, that's a good thing, but it, it obviously spikes your payroll. One thing, I, I provide this data to everybody that interviews for a position here, just to try to tell our story. I always point out our enrollment to them. As prospective teachers, I, they generally want to know, well, okay, you're, we, you're a class D school, you're a rural school. What are your enrollment projections looking like? And so, I'm always very proud to, to say, hey, we've got a good strong enrollment all, all the way down to pre-grad, right? So, stability. They may even be concerned about, okay, if I'm into coaching, you know, are we potentially looking at a co-op of sports with a Nigger in school, and how would that maybe affect me in the future? So, our enrollment data is, 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 is a good figure, strong figure for us. That'll be a factor with regard to these facility conversations as well. Performance data in the bottom left drives a lot of, most of our conversation with regard to PD and what we need to do. And if you listened to the call last night, you heard me kind of mention something about our ELA scores are not where we want them to be. And most every school district in Nebraska can say that, but there, there's, we, we really need to kind of put a, rather than just saying, this is our goal, and you do what you do. Most school districts can just get caught in the mundane routine of, well, we just, we teach reading, and we teach this and this and this. You know, we're, and Kyle, you know, touched on it a little bit, what we're doing at the high school, because you don't stop teaching reading at the third grade. So, and our scores with regard to our reading are NSCAS scores, our third through eighth grade, and spring NSCAS. So, we don't, and we do have ACT data there also with regard to ELA, English Language Arts ELA course reading. But, but that is a, that's a, a serious, intense focus on our efforts as I shared with the board my goals last month. We want to get that to seventy percent. We want to get from fifty-six to seven percent. Now, we've grown each of the last two years, but we grow at two percent each, we're not gonna get there. We, we need to, we need to grow more significantly. And so, we've got a good leadership team, obviously, that is focused on that. And we need to put the right training and tools in our teachers' hands. And it, it involves everybody, every grade level, every content area. And again, you heard Kyle tend to talk about how, how are our high school history teachers helping to facilitate reading instruction, even though those students might not be part of the data? Because it's only through eighth grade where they take the NSCAS, but, but still, nobody's excluded from trying to help support reading growth improvement.
That's a state goal too, isn't it?
It is. Yeah, I stole it from Dr. Momber. Now, whether it's easier as a state to, to move the needle or a school district where one or two students can come in and affect their reading performance in NSCAS, nobody is exempt from taking the NSCAS, NSCAS, right? So, students that cannot read must take NSCAS reading in grades three through eight. Now, we do have alternative assessments for them, and that's just another part of the conversation. But the state is never exempted, students for NISA or NSCAS testing.
I'll make a motion that we accept the funding of public schools annual report for 2024.
I'll second that. Kate? We moved and seconded to accept the 2024 annual report. Discussion? Not, vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Yourself?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion carried five oh. All right, we'll move on to number 18. Discuss and take possible action on accepting the 2023, 24 audit.
Kate received this last month. Obviously, statutorily, we're required to audit the books regardless of how much it costs. You just paid the bill seventy thousand five hundred dollars for your book. That then produces our AFR through the Department of Ed, which is not on the website yet. When we have that, I'll get that to you as well because that's a ten-page document that gives you everything from this.
What's AFR?
The AFR, annual financial report. Yeah. So, this goes to NDE. NDE then produces an AFR based on, on the figures. So, it's a little handier if you just want to look at numbers. But if you want to read narratives, this is your baby. And the narratives in here, I would, I would just say the language is the same year after year after year. Their primary concern is segregation of duties and internal control. So, an audit is generally designed to find out if you have potential fraud. Are people stealing taxpayer money from the school district? You've all heard stories, you know, that exists. Their, their primary responsibility, the audit, is to see it, you know, make sure that's not happening. If it is, we identify it. In a small school district, their biggest concern is that somebody's gonna steal cash primarily when they take gate at a C-team basketball game. Now, Ms. Bramer is not pilfering the, the gate, you know. But that's what they worry about, is they have access to that cash, and then they go count it, and then they put it to Baggy, and then they lock it up. One person. They want segregation of duties. You know, she takes the tickets, she gives the cash then to Kyle, and then Kyle and Tammy collectively, and then somebody else takes the bank. They, they have to write in the report, we wish you didn't do that, but we understand why that's the way you operate. So, we see that every year. The first time I saw it, I thought, oh my God. We, they're, they're saying we have a potential with internal control. You know, oh my gosh, that's a little bit. Well, it's primarily because we don't have a variety of staff members. Now, there are measures that we can and, and, and should take with regard to some of those things. You know, the, the bank statement. So, every year, they're like, okay. So, Kelly goes, she gets the bank statement, she opens it, she pays them. You know, who's looking over her shoulder, right? Because Kelly does happen to hold the position where auditors are most concerned, quite honestly, you know, business manager. So, Kelly gets to have, you know, these conversations with them every year about, I have not created a phantom staff member with a phantom bank account number that only I have access to, and I send, you know, I mean, but that happens, right? And so, they have to talk with us about it, and they have to look for those things. And so, we do, you know, we've, we've, we do some things differently since they've audited us. Now, this is about year five that Dana Coleman has audited us. Tim has, you know, the president has some responsibilities with regard to putting the audit together and some oversight. But that's enough, darling. I'm talking about the audit, you know, from, from my perspective.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial audit.
You can interrupt me anytime to make a motion.
Motion, if you have a second?
I'll second.
Justin can. Justin, moving. Okay. Moved and seconded to accept the 2024 audit. Further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Myself, yes.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
Motion carried five oh. And a table nineteen, and a, number twenty, discuss take possible action on contract renewal for Mrs. Jenison for the 25, 26 school year.
So, I, I had my annual evaluation again, had that in December, had a conversation. So, that's, that's been taken care of. I certainly recommend her for contract renewal for next school year, and then for her to negotiate with you for terms of contract next month. But would, would ask you to show your, your, your commitment to her as our elementary principal for next year.
Typically done negotiating.
Paul, make a motion that we approve a contract for Mrs. Thompson for the 25, 26 school year.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded to approve contract for Ms. Thompson for the 2025, 26 school year. Discussion? Not, vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yourself, yes.
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carried five oh. To twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal for Mr. Kal Schmidt for 2025, 26 school year.
Same conversation.
Paul, make a motion that we approve a contract renewal for Mr. Schmidt for the 25, 26 school year.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded to approve, renew, and approve contract renewal for Mr. Schmidt for 25, 26 school year. More discussion? Vote. Kate?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yourself, yes. Motion carried five oh. Move on into reports. Number twenty-two, start with the activity director.
Winter sports season's about the halfway point right now. I did reach out to Mr. Gunther at Osmond about bowling, just to see in the future if they would be interested in co-opting for unified bowling and for regular season bowling, where Osmond would host the unified side of things. We would host the regular season side of things. He was gonna start some conversations over there, but I was gonna make a phone call to him that we can see where that's sitting at and if that would be a possibility. Because currently, we go there and we bowl. Our kids are there anyways, and things have been going well with us being over there so far. So, just see if that's a possibility. Conference tournaments will start up here at the end of the, end of the month, and then here in March, we'll host district speech again. So, we'll have a full, full winter here moving forward.
Kate, any other questions?
There are two bowling seasons?
So, they have unified bowling, and then they have regular season bowling for high schools. So, unified bowling would be paired with special education and high needs. So.
And we're talking about maybe doing both?
Glad to hear it's going.
Yeah.
Yeah, practice. I think Leonard takes one there. I got it. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Schmidt. We'll move on to twenty-three, principal's report.
The only other thing that I wanted to add on there that maybe doesn't specifically say, on Monday, we don't have school students, but there are five of us who are going to present at the winter workshop. It's essentially a meeting with several schools in northeast Nebraska. And of those teachers, Bernice Yoke will be talking about media. I don't want to miss anybody, so I gotta go back to my document. Renita Jacobson back here is going to be talking about her ed rising. John Torrey will be sharing information about literacy and the things he's doing. I will represent with Midwest Bank, our junior pirate branch and everything we've done with that. And then Jeremy Peter will be holding informational things about counseling. So, we're very excited.
That's great.
And honored to be able to present and share all the good things that are happening within our district.
Nice work.
Glad to hear it.
We had about that many last year. We had a big snowstorm come, right?
Yeah.
So, we had truncated winter workshop, which is always Mark Luthencane Junior Day. So, we, it was just the keynote left, right?
Yep.
And then we had three snow days the, the rest of the week. But we were, Jen and I were prepared to present Kyle on the, the leadership lessons from, so every year, we've had two to five of our staff members that provide their leadership at, at the winter workshop. So, yes, it, it certainly would, something to be proud of that playing in public schools is very well represented in their leadership roles.
Is this something we're selected for?
You, it's just a bit of a proposal. Sometimes we're, we're asked, we, we, we kind of pressure our folks. I, I mean, every one of our teachers could conceivably share something with a, a group of, of teachers in a classroom. But not, not, that's not everybody's jam. Hey, I won't stand in front of seventh graders, not a bunch of other seventh grade teachers, for example.
Yeah, sounds good. Twenty-four, president's report. The only thing I have tonight is that Dr. Arlitt talked a little about meeting times. I guess we used to have it back at five o'clock on Mondays. They might appreciate it if we could move it up a little closer. So, you know, I don't know how that works with everybody's schedule. Get us home earlier at night too. But if it's stuff that doesn't work, you know, like, we think about maybe move it to six or even a five o'clock meeting possibly. I was saying, I don't know if that's a problem. Can we go back to seven in the summertime?
Yeah, you go schedule.
Well, in, in the past season too.
This summertime though, that's usually about when I start.
It's like midday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm coaching something eleven months out of the year, so I'll probably be coaching something at five o'clock, but that's okay. I also got kids that I could be getting better if we go back earlier. So, that's fine. Just once a month.
Even, even, we'll maybe roll that early in like one, two.
Yeah, I'll make whatever.
So maybe, Mr. Thompson, between you and I, we'll talk between now and next meeting, which February meeting is oftentimes at noon. Once a year, we, we try and meet during school day, you're coming, welcome to come eat school lunch, and then we have a meeting in the elementary. So we'll, we'll probably discuss it in the, we'll do that next month and then whatever March meeting time.
Yeah, I think next March we'll be having a meeting, that's, that's okay. Can we make that?
Cheapest lunch I can eat ever.
I usually eat before.
I had a turkey, I think, one day, it was Thanksgiving day.
Yeah, you came for the Thanksgiving feast.
That was good.
Went and snatched a bunch of food off Foster's plate.
You paid for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that, I'm going to mention that to you.
Yeah, sure.
Next month will be the new year's. Other than that, that's all I've got, so we'll go to twenty-five, superintendent's report.
Okay, if I, just made a comment on what Danny Doerr, I, I think, my takeaway from what Danny shared was, teachers, please don't dehumanize our classroom. What means the most to me, and I bet she speaks for most students, is we, we don't want you to AI your classroom completely. We, we, we love and respect and appreciate and know you as, as human beings, as people that have relationships with it. We can't have a relationship with AI, we can't have a relationship with risk, but it's an engagement tool, but, but please don't let that be who you are as a teacher. And so I really appreciated that, that comment from her. Couple of, I, I just want to identify a few things that I stuffed in your packet. You see a stay survey in there, so there's some good data in there. I mentioned this to you a couple of months ago, that we're going to administer this stay survey to our teachers. So I would, I want to talk about this more next month, but you need a month to kind of digest it. So they all had an anonymous opportunity to respond to six different questions. So I, I want you to please take the time to look through that, take notes on it, highlight whatever, and then next month, I think we'll have some more conversation. I mean, I might even ask you what, what your takeaways are, right, from that. So Kyle and Jen are going to have face-to-face, stay interview type of conversations, so just to give teachers a chance to, okay, yeah, this was anonymous, but here's what I care about Pliny Public Schools, here's why I stay at Pliny Public Schools, here's why I would continue to stay at Pliny Public Schools. So we know that retention is better than recruitment. Retain your teachers so you don't have to go out and fight other school districts for good teachers. So there's that copy, the stay survey gave you a big copy of the annual report. There's also some NEP trend data in there, so this is just this simple little spreadsheet. So the NEP is the Nebraska Education Profile, so it's the one-stop shopping on the Nebraska NDE website for all kinds of data on every school district. I mean, it's, I, I go there a lot and look at other school districts and, and our own data, so just gives you a little trend data on some different things. So this is, this kind of goes along with your annual report. Some of this data on here is on your annual report, but not all of it. So I just wanted you to have that and then some, the NDE also did a teacher vacancy survey, wanted you to have that data with regard to teacher shortage and how that's looking and what they found. The most shocking thing on here that I've been hearing administrators for a couple of years is that top unfilled positions at elementary is number two. We've thought for years, well, you'll always have elementary teachers. There's always young girls that want to be elementary teachers. That's some of the highest unfilled. Now, you need several elementary teachers, every school district does. You only need maybe one or two science teachers if you're Pliny Nebraska, right? So, so that's, that's good data. And then I give you an NASB advocacy handbook, so they are your organization that supports you, as you know. You pay some money to belong to that organization, so I just want you to be, have all the information with regard to the services they provide and how they can help support you in, in your role. So I had, I, I think the copy in the book is inaccurate. I've been scrolling up here and maybe you guys will like that. So we can put, you know, I, I talked to Tom Sauer, we have a whole bunch of these handy-dandy Chromebooks, okay? So we can, if we want to get rid of the binder, you can do your whole meeting projected and you can have a Chromebook in front of you and study your binder, accessing the policies. So for example, main thing, so when we want to do policy review, here's our webpage, right? Policies are under menu, district office, Board of Education policies, okay? And there they all are. You find the one you need. What did we do today? Two oh two, oh two, conflict of interest, and there it is, right? So your policies are always accessible on your phone, on a website, so, or maybe you don't need these and I will just, from now on, from my laptop, I will always scroll through the meeting for you. Want you to really start thinking about that because you're right, hauling around your three-ring binder, archaic. It just probably isn't necessary. Now, for people old school, I need paper, you know, I don't, I don't mind it maybe as much, but no, I'd rather operate from, have everything right here. We can all look at the same thing together at the same time. So be thinking about that, we can have more conversation about that, you know, next month. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Thompson.
Did you get?
Yes, yes, Justin, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, so there was a data breach with Power School. And they're, they're our SIS, our student information system, so obviously we have a lot of student data in there, identifiable, student identifiable information, so there's some privacy rights, obviously, with, with regard to that. So there was a data breach on December twenty-eighth. Several days later, they notified school districts. And that email went to our identified school information system, Tom, went to Tom Sauer. So he got that email on the seventh of January. He read it, digested it, he made a determination that they, this, this. He didn't, he didn't push that on to, on to, to me to say, hey, Darren, we better probably do something, because Power School did go ahead and say, you may want to notify your public, here are some template language letters that you could say, hey, Power School experienced a data breach, it was to this level of severity, and they're obligated and required by law to make sure that they, they share that out with their public. One school district in Nebraska, and this is how it made the news, it probably caught Justin's attention. So Elkhorn Public Schools decided to go ahead and push out a letter to all of their families that Power School, our student information system had a data breach. Well, when, when Elkhorn Public Schools sends out a letter to all their families, it's going to make the Omaha news. So it made the news about, okay, we may have this issue. From, from my quick perspective, when Justin brought it to my attention, it doesn't appear that many school districts thought that was necessary to go ahead and do that. Elkhorn did, that's their call. I visited with Tom, he said, Darren, here's, here's what I saw and here's what I was thinking. I said, Tom, I think you made the right choice. I, I don't think it was necessary to tell our families, because Power School didn't say, or recommend, you better let your folks know and this is, and they better look at this, 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 or this to see if any of their personal identifiable information has been compromised. He didn't think that they thought it was really that important because they waited several days to even notify schools. So he, he made a decision that, okay, we're, we're not at, we're not at a level of risk here to where we need to notify our families. In hindsight, could we have? Sure, wouldn't have taken much really to do, but it might have alarmed people unnecessarily, but, so I, I absolutely don't believe that we're at risk, that our parents should be concerned that some of their students' personal identifiable information has been compromised. But I appreciate you bringing that to my attention because that was the first I heard.
So we don't know if any of our data was compromised, or we may never know.
Correct. Correct, we probably may never know. They do have a statutory obligation to notify all of their users if they've had some kind of breach. Now, they can probably narrow that down to, we don't need to include this part of the country, but we do need to hear, so. But, yeah, they, they didn't, it didn't seem to be in the language there, the way Tom interpreted it, that they really thought it was that important because they waited several days to even notify us from when they detected it. Now, I'm not going to second guess how they want about their business, but, but anyway, Justin, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention because it's something I probably should be aware of, but the link out to being watched a little video and Reggie and Oracle, and that's what the news in Omaha should be.
Kate, you guys have any other questions?
February meeting is the tenth, right?
Yes. If that's the second Monday, I believe.
Second Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just plan on that.
What time, what?
Well, I invite you to come and eat at eleven thirty, meetings at noon in the elementary library.
Eat at eleven thirty if you want to, otherwise we can, that's the. Okay, I think that's it then for tonight.